Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, June 6, 2018. At 7:45, Ms. Aguilar for the invocation, please.
Please rise. Let's bow our heads this evening and thank the Lord for our daily blessings and ask Him to bestow upon the residents of the City of West Miami health, peace, wisdom, and to this commission, leadership, and countless blessings. We pray for our military servicemen and women protecting and serving. We pray for our police officers and also our firefighters, our first responders, so that they can return home safe. And especially at this meeting during the month of Father's Day, we pray for all the fathers who have earned their right to a wonderful celebration. A happy Father's Day, and we ask for your blessing in your name. Amen.
Chief for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
President.
Vice Mayor Ronder Rodriguez.
President.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
President.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a floor.
Thank you. Item four, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for May 16, 2018, regular city commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Madam Clerk, at this time, I would like to request your preference on taking some items out of order.
I would recommend Mr. Mayor to hear item 10A, the presentation by SBA, then item 11H, the presentation by the Age Friendly Initiative, and then the mitigations, the 11A and B, in that order.
Can you read the first item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 10, on the unfinished business presentation by Amy Perez, Business Opportunities Specialist from U.S. Business Administration. And on her behalf, on behalf of SBA, we have Janelle Heine. Welcome to the City of West Miami.
Come to the state you name and address for the record, and welcome to the City of West Miami.
Thank you. Janelle Heine, I am the Deputy District Director for the Small Business Administration. Our address is 100 South Biscayne Boulevard, Floor 7, in Miami, Florida, 33131. How is this going to advance?
Mr. President, I think you could be successful with the presentation.
PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for letting me come today to speak. Amy sends her regrets, she wasn't able to make it, but I hope I'm a wonderful substitute. During the presentation, if you have questions, I'm willing to take them at any time.
She spoke very highly of you.
Oh, thank you.
She called me on the phone.
Thank you. So, yeah, U.S. Small Business Administration, if you want to move to the second thing, what we're going to do is just a real quick overview of our programs and services, so that you can see the benefit that we can bring to the small business community. We've been around for quite a while, obviously, more than 65 years. We are charged with empowering entrepreneurs to get started and to grow their business, but also to help them manage their business while they're in existence, and also to recover from national disasters. That's our mission. Next one. We do this through four different areas. We have free business counseling that's offered by our resource partner network. We have financial assistance through our guaranteed loan programs. We offer home and disaster loans, along with business loans, for any naturally declared disaster. And we offer certifications that help people enter the federal marketplace for federal contracting. A little bit more on the funding. We do not give the loans directly, although your city attorney told me that he did have one of our prior direct loans. Prior to '95, we did direct lending from SBA to the client. Currently, we use a guaranteed loan program, so our borrowers access the program through a lender. The lender determines if there's enough risk where they want to provide or get our guarantee. Anywhere from 50 to 90 percent, we can guarantee to mitigate risk. Most of the time, it's utilized because there's a lack of collateral. There may be some credit issues. It may be that they're in a risky industry like restaurants, or it could be because they're a startup. Anything that would increase the risk for the lender is where our guarantee can step in, much like FHA does on a home loan. We do that for business loans. Our loans are available for for-profit entities only. We don't assist nonprofits, except through our disaster program. We do this through two different programs. We have our 7A program and our 504. We're the most well-known for those. They are used for a variety of purposes, for either getting inventory, working capital, financing the acquisition of fixed assets. There's multiple ways that we can do it. The benefit to our borrower, because obviously, the guarantee, the benefit is to the lender, but our benefit to the borrower is that they can get a loan they would not normally qualify for. We're considered an alternative lender. We're not a traditional line of capital for a business. But we use that, what we offer is a longer maturity. Our loans can go up to 10 years for working capital, which is unheard of for a traditional lender. We can go up to 25 years for fixed asset financing, like commercial real estate, and depending on the life of the equipment, we can go that far as well. So, we offer fully amortized loans. There's no balloon payments, and therefore, it makes it more affordable in the early stages of business ownership. Then, we have two other programs that are not as widely known, but we are trying to make the push, so that people know about them. Our microloan program and our Community Advantage Program. And those are accessed through mission-based lenders, which are nonprofit lenders trying to reach underserved markets, like minority communities or low-to-moderate income areas, based on the census tract. Anywhere from $50,000 as a maximum for our microloan program, or up to 250 for our Community Advantage Program. And again, it's targeted towards underserved markets. So, our particular, our agency right now, with our new administrator, Linda McMahon, is even making a big push into rural areas. So, that's another part, a segment of the population that we're trying to reach. The best thing about those programs is that they are also tied with business technical assistance. So, they're not just handing out money like a lender would, they're there to help them utilize the money and make sure that they're using them in the proper ways. The other thing that we offer is the contracting. Most people know that the U.S. Federal Government, which I am an employee of, is the largest purchaser of goods and services in our nation. Over $550 billion are spent every year by the federal government. We have a goal of 23 percent of that target to go to small businesses, and I'm happy to say, for the last five years, we've met that level. This year, we actually had a record-breaking, or last year, I said 2017, we had a record-breaking level in that we gave over $105.7 million to small businesses, I'm sorry, billion dollars to small businesses in federal contracting. We have two programs that can assist people with that, which actually decreases the bidding pool. So, I say 23 percent goes to small businesses. The statistic is that we have about 30 million small businesses in the United States. So, if we let out a contract for small business, you're probably actually going against what I would consider larger businesses, those that have maybe 1,000 employees or 1,500 employees. But with our 8A program and our Hub Zone program, we can actually lessen the bidding pool, to where it's only 8A firms or only Hub Zone firms that would bid on a contract, or we have sole source capability under that, which means that if a contracting officer likes the firm, they can pick to give that contract straight to that firm. So, again, there's a little bit of an advantage for having those two certifications. Then, this is the part that I really like to talk about, though, which is the support that we offer through our resource partner network. We, meaning people that work in SBA, typically have never owned a small business, although my parents have owned three, so I grew up around it, but I'm not the best one to tell people how to start or run their business. We rely on experts, mentors, if you will, like our Small Business Development Centers, our SCORE offices, our Women's Business Centers, and the Veterans Business Outreach Centers, to offer the one-on-one assistance that they need, and it's free. Their taxpayers have already paid for it. We actually just funded these participants. But it offers them the one-on-one assistance on a variety of topics. It could be starting a business, it could be defining a market plan, it could be access to international trade. So, this is where I think we have the best impact with small businesses. It's not necessarily funding, it's to make sure that they're running their business correctly, and when they do get funding, to make sure they're utilizing the funds correctly. So, I think that that's something that's important for you guys to know, and we actually have a fabulous Small Business Development Center here in Miami-Dade County that's tied to FIU, and then we have a SCORE chapter for Miami-Dade County as well. So, we actually have boots on the ground here in our areas. The last thing to talk about is our disaster assistance. We all just got over Hurricane Irma, and if you're like me, I'm still waiting to replace my roof, but hurricane season has started again, and that's the typical disaster that we see here in South Florida. Although we do have tornadoes, we have freezes in Central Florida, there's always something going on, even things like the Pulse nightclub shooting, that was considered a disaster for our programs. What we try to do with our program is to bring people back to whole. So, where your loss for your house, if it's physical damage, may be $60,000. If your insurance only covers 40, the additional 20 percent, SBA can come in and direct lend money through a separate appropriation from Congress to get people back to whole. And their low interest rate, usually less than 4 percent, long-term, up to 30 years. So, it allows them a vehicle that, A, is not very expensive to start with, but they can prepay at any time. And I will tell you that for Hurricane Irma in 2017, already, they have approved 5,916 loans for just over 216 million. So, and it's ongoing. In fact, next week is when we have our deadline for economic injury loans for businesses that didn't suffer physical damage, but may have lost clients, or sales, or vendors, and they've suffered economic injury. So, that application actually takes nine months to do, and we're coming up on that hard and fast deadline right now. Last thing, we're trying to be coming into the 21st century. So, we actually have social media platforms now, which we did not before. I've listed not only our regular website, but our district website, which is the South Florida website you see up there. We have a Twitter Face Page, along with our agency overall, but also for our district. We're on Facebook and Instagram, although I don't do any of that stuff, but I do follow it. So, there's many ways to reach us. Always the best way, I think, is just to call us on the phone, and we can walk you through or help you out with any assistance that you need. So, that's my presentation. Is there any questions?
I have to say that some, more than 40 years ago, when I was going to law school, I had a full-time job, but in addition to that, I started a business. And I went out to SBA, and I got a loan from SBA. And I was able to get my business through, and not only business, not only the money that I received from them, which I pay back, by the way, but also technical assistance from an office that they had, which I can't remember the name.
SCORE, right.
SCORE, right. But they will give you finance, counseling, and how to pay taxes, and what to do with workers, and where to get your insurance, and whatever. So, I thank SBA for the wonderful job that they have done, and they have changed the life of many, many people.
Thank you.
Great service.
Any questions?
Well, I'd like to, Amy, I think you was in elementary school in 1975, where we tried to, well, we did open a business in 80th Street and 18th Avenue. Was Cuba TV, you know, appliances, and then TV and furniture distributors, DVA as Cuba TV, and then we got $20,000 from Small Business Administration.
Okay, great.
And that was through the Republican National Bank. I was the man who participated with you. And I remember those days, and I think more than 25 friends, they fall off taking money from the Small Business Administration. And some of them are today, big businesses here in Miami, and they started with a small business, the $20,000 in those days.
Yeah, we have a lot of success stories, I will tell you. Even Eldorado Furniture started with SBA funding.
Right, because they were two blocks from us.
Correct, yeah. So, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, I think the big disadvantage for our agency is that we don't put a lot of money into advertising or promotion, so we rely a lot on word of mouth. If someone has a great experience, we're hoping that they're going to tell everybody that they know, that has an entrepreneurial spirit, obviously.
Eldorado was three doors. We were two, or three also, but you know, you see the kind of business they have now.
Right, yeah.
They even opened in Naples, a beautiful store now. They have one in Fort Myers, and open now a new one in Naples, great store.
Right. Amy, I, in the past, have attended some events promoting the microloans to women in underdeveloped countries, and I found it fascinating how such a very small amount of money can do such a tremendous, be such a tremendous help for a woman to make straw baskets, or shoes, or the simplest thing that we would think is just so simple, but for that, for that woman, it's huge. So, I think that program...
Well, I'll tell you that typically, we say that it does go up to $50,000, but on average, it's about $9,000.
It's small.
Yeah. When you look at it, I mean, there's people that maybe want to start getting the starter kit for Avon, and start that, they can use that as the microloan. It's, it doesn't have to be a huge amount of money. We point them towards a couple of our microlenders, because they're just fabulous at what they do, and I know that their heart's in the right place to help them along the way. It's not, I need to get the loan done, and then I never see you again. They're in that business, working with them constantly, so, yeah.
Especially the ones for the, like I said, the women in the underdeveloped countries, I was just, I was blown away by the, by the work that you all do for that, so, thank you for that. That was amazing.
No problem.
Madam Manager?
Thank you very much.
Well, no, no, no.
But thank you for her presentation. Thank you for your presentation.
Not yet, not yet.
You're welcome.
Madam Manager, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if you're interested, or if SBA is interested and the city agrees to it, we'll be happy to, you know, partner with you, like we do with the HBIF, the Hispanic Business Initiative Program. It's a Hispanic network.
They're actually called Prospero right now.
Prospero, that's right.
We work with them as well.
You do. And they have had successful meetings downstairs, and maybe we could offer the venue.
Of course.
And see if there's a fit, and obviously, you would do your marketing or your invites, but maybe we can make an in-kind contribution, because obviously, we want our businesses to grow and prosper, because the city will prosper as well.
Well, and we bring not only ourselves, but, like I said, I can bring all the resource partners, I can bring lenders, all of my contacts are available to you as well, for the business community.
If I could get your business card, and if the mayor would like, we can...
No, absolutely. She bit me to the punch, because the whole idea was for you to come over here, present to the commission, and if, you know, for them to ask you a question. And I think it's a great program. I participate on my own head. So, something that you can come in and have like a workshop or something.
Of course.
If that's the interest of the commission.
We can do face-to-face, we can do webinars, we have lots of different platforms to reach people at. I will tell you that on our website, there is a way to subscribe, so when we send out information, we have a weekly blast of all the events that we do and our resource partners as well, we'll do special items, and we have a monthly newsletter as well. So, it's always easiest to find us in those venues. But, yeah, we definitely want to partner, for sure.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you for coming. Next item?
Item 11H, presentation by Age Friendly Initiative, in reference to establishing a partnership with the City of West Miami, Mayor Mujina and Terry Busse Arvesu, Miami-Dade County Senior Advocate.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present once to the whole committee, and we've met with you before. I need to state my name and...
Yes.
Terry Busse Arvesu, I'm the Senior Advocate for Miami-Dade County Office of the Mayor, 111 Northwest 1st Street, Miami, Florida. I'm here today with one of my partners, Isabel Rivera, and we wanted to talk to you about the Age Friendly Initiative, which we want to invite you, West Miami, to be part of this beautiful initiative, to recognize you for the work that you're doing already with your seniors. So, we have several municipalities already on board. We have Miami-Dade County, Pinecrest, Palmetto Bay, Cutler Bay, City of Miami, Coral Gables was the last one that joined, where you have an appointment with Aventura, what else? Miami Lakes, correct? Did I miss anybody? There's others that are in the works, in different stages. But anyways, I'm going to briefly tell you what the Age Friendly is, and then Isabel's going to give you the specifics about it. The Miami-Dade Age Friendly Initiative is a collaborative effort with the collaborative goal of creating a Miami date where older adults can stay active, engaged, and healthy with dignity and enjoyment. Today, the, okay, that's, the Leadership Committee and coordinating agencies include AARP of Florida, the Alliance for Aging, Health Foundation of South Florida, Miami-Dade County, Miami-Dade Metropolitan Planning Organization, United Way of Miami-Dade County, and Urban Health Partnerships. And it's under the leadership of Isabel, who is part of the Urban Health Partnership. So, she's going to tell you specifically more details of what it entails, and...
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Good evening. Oh, I think I just broke...
Don't worry about it.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you all this evening. My name is Isabel Rivera. I'm the manager of the Miami-Dade Age Friendly Initiative. My office's address is 425 Northeast 22nd Avenue, Miami, Florida. I've been the manager of the initiative for the past three years. It's been really exciting to see all of these partners come together, because when you start talking about aging, it's something that happens to everyone. We might be in different stages of aging, but we're all growing older, and we want to be able to live with quality of life and with a healthy lifestyle. So, this initiative is a great opportunity to showcase communities that are really invested in making sure that that happens. So, the Age Friendly Network is a network that was started by the World Health Organization. So, this is a global initiative, and AARP is the network here in the United States. They work with the World Health Organization. So, when you join the network, you're joining AARP's network, you're joining the World Health Organization's network. Miami-Dade joined in 2016, and like Terry mentioned, we have several other municipalities that have signed on as well. And when you sign on, what you're saying is that you're, it's not that you're done, and you know, you're completely age-friendly, it's that you're committed to working towards making your community good for all ages. And so, the structure of the Age Friendly Network is based on eight domains of livability. It's actually in your packet, but it looks like this, and it talks about the built environment, so housing, transportation, parks, outdoor spaces, but also the social environment, so what support services, social inclusion, respect, communication and information. All of this together will make a community that supports healthy aging. So, we wanted to invite you to partner with us, and also to consider joining the network as one of the Age Friendly municipalities. We have great resources at the county level, we have wonderful partners, like Terry mentioned, we have seven lead agencies that are really committed to this work, and there's partners from universities and a lot of different organizations that really are committed to working towards this age-friendly goal. In your packets as well, there's a little overview of what the process looks like for a community joining, to actually join the network. It requires a letter from the city, and then a short application, then it really, and it asks, you know, why are you interested in this, and why, and what would you, what would you do to make your community more age-friendly, or what steps would you take? And also, once you join the network, you're invited to assess your community, and that might be talking to residents, or looking at your departments, to think about things that you might already be doing, or what you might want to do to be able to address the needs of older adults, and then developing a plan. It doesn't have to be complicated, but just in your city, what would you do to make your community more age-friendly? And at the county level, we have all of these partners to provide technical assistance and partner with you. We also, right now, have a mini-grant program that's open. We want to encourage age-friendly projects. The deadline is at the end of next week, so we encourage the city and other partners to consider applying as well. And it's really to start to get people excited about this age-friendly opportunities, and to get creative, to see what we can do for our community. Is there any, are there any questions I can answer?
I like what I hear. How much is the cost? It sounds too good to be true.
There's no cost to join the network. It's really a process, it's really whatever you want to do to implement projects in your community, so that you can already be built in what you're already doing, but having that age-friendly lens. So, like I mentioned, you're already doing a lot of things in your community that can go into your plan, and then you can think about in the future what else you might want to do. But there's no cost to join or to continue this work.
So, it's just a matter of applying?
Mm-hmm.
And then going for that grant? We only have a week left, though, on that one. So, will this bring a bigger work burden on our already work-burden community center staff, or, I mean, is there a lot of involvement from our part that's necessary to get this going?
The only thing that would be, I think extra would be doing an assessment, but again, that's really however you want to do that in your community, and we do provide, we have an opportunity right now in funding to provide technical assistance, so we can help you with that. And then also, the action plan, but those are, can incorporate things that you're already doing. So, some of, some of the cities in Florida that have recently joined said that they had each of their departments just come up with a list of things they're already doing, and things that they want to do in the future, and that's, altogether, that's their plan for their community. So, it doesn't have to be a big burden to the staff, and it can really be incorporate things that are already happening, and things that you would want to do in the future.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Ms. Aguilar?
I'm familiar with the organization, and obviously, Mr. Mayor, during our meeting, we got to learn a little bit about the initiatives. I think there's a benefit to the community center and to our population, our growing elderly population, me included. But we have a very good social media, we have a very good person on board that can help us, Mr. Quintana, to develop something that would really help with promoting or seeking persons to participate, and I think that we have a wealth of information that we can share with you at the community center. Marilin Miraya could probably either work with you directly, or assign somebody from the center to work with you. It's definitely, all the resources that come together are beneficial for the city, so... But of course, we thought we'd bring it to you first, to see if you wanted us to engage, and then we have to go through the application process.
Okay.
And a letter of support, correct?
Yes, so there's the letter from the mayor, and then there's, there can also be a resolution from the commission, if you would like. I can, we have actually examples of other municipalities that have done something similar, and then this application, which you have a copy of. It's not long, it's just asks about why you're joining, and what, how you would go through the process if you join the network.
So, this time, we have, we need the blessing to move forward. So, if you don't have any other further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It passes, so...
Thank you.
So, the next step, get together with Ms. Aguilar, and so, so then, this is going to be brought up as a resolution next time?
Yes. At the next commission meeting, we'll bring up a resolution, we'll give it to the city clerk, and have Mr. Villalobos review it first, and we'll, we'll work with you, then I'll prepare a letter of support for your signature, Mr. Mayor, and we're, we're in the application process shortly thereafter.
Wonderful. Very exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I thank you for considering your older adult population, and I'm excited to partner with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing us to us.
Thank you.
At this time, I want to take a couple of minute break till the city attorney comes back.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
My packet back. You're going to send me the resolution? Yeah. I'll send it, and then I'll give it to a mayor. So, we'll...
Thank you, Isabel.
Madam Clerk, can you read the next item, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11, on the new business agenda, item 11A, request for mitigation of court enforcement links for court violations at 6541 Southwest 18th Street, West Miami, Florida, and owner Prestige VRP 1 LLC. May I read the resolution, Mr. Mayor?
Please do.
Item 11B, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the city manager to accept a... authorizing the city manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of blank from Prestige BRP One LLC on code enforcement links for code violations at the property located on, at 6541 Southwest 18th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by blank, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Can you state your name for, for the record, and address, and how are you related?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Anthony Asquera, Alejandro Villarelo P.A.'s, our law firm, 16400 Northwest 59th Avenue is our address. I am the attorney for the property owner.
Thank you. Uh, before you proceed, I would like to hear from, uh, Mr. Penna...
Of course.
...first, and, uh, our city attorney, and so on, and then I'll go back to you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Penna?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, uh, vice mayor. The property at 6541 Southwest 18th Street was cited for nuisance, uh, mostly, uh, being overgrown and abandoned, and also the utility has been being blocked. Uh, both of those eventually got resolved over a period of time, uh, where it racked up a, uh, close to $16,000, I believe.
Four hundred and thirty-one.
How long, Mr. Penna?
Over a year and a half. And, um, the, they eventually, uh, took ownership of the property by another, uh, corporation, Prestige, and cleaned up the property and is ready for other occupancy or sale, whichever they decide.
Okay, so, so the, uh, whoever caused the situation, um, it's no longer, uh, here. I mean, we have the new owner of the property that came and cleaned up, and now they're here for the mitigation. Is that correct?
Prestige, yes.
Prestige, okay. And what was the amount again? Total amount?
Sixteen hundred, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety cents.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one.
Correct.
Okay.
We had had, uh, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, we had had, um, a conversation with, uh, the attorney and Mr. Penna, uh, in order to, uh, be able to suggest to the commission a, a reduction of the fine to a particular amount, which the administration will, uh, tell you on. Uh, we did, uh, negotiate, uh, the, uh, the suggested amount to the commission, uh, due to the fact that they had done all they could in order to bring that, uh, those, uh, violations to, uh, completion.
So, so this were nuisance, there were not code violation?
Correct.
Okay? So, there's no building violation? Okay. Or was building violation? Okay, um, Mrs. Manager?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Having heard from all the parties and having discussed this with our city attorney and as early as this afternoon with our, um, chief code enforcement officer, we feel $2,500 is reasonable for us to at least, um, honor the time that we have spent on the file and the time of the code enforcement and the board and the process. So, we feel that because of the severity as well, and we go back to the issue of each case's weight on its own merits, we feel $2,500 will settle and cover the matter.
Okay. Uh, anything else that you wanna add to it?
No, sir. We are in agreement.
Okay.
That's your recommendation?
That would be our recommendation, yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Well, I, I would like to say something.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, the new owners don't let this kinda thing happen again.
Well, actually, they've had, um, a few violations, um, after this, and they were resolved the same day. So, and it was because of the renter having a, uh, a vehicle parked down the grass and something, and that was immediately taken care of. So, they are on top of the property, making sure that there aren't issues that, uh, take long or anything to that effect.
Well, hopefully, that will be the case. Thank you.
That's what we're doing. Yes, sir.
I have a question. So, this is a rental property?
It's actually up for sale at the moment.
It's up?
It's at, uh, up for sale.
It's rented currently?
I think they are, uh, evicting the person that's in there right now.
Okay, so the property owner, are they local?
Yes.
Or they are, they are local?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, one more thing, uh, time for, for payment? Uh, we need to also...
We usually, uh, advise the commission that, uh, by the way, the, whatever mitigation there is today, if it's not paid within the time that, uh, the commission advises, uh, it should go back to the original amount, okay?
Okay.
Absolutely. I would request 90 days since the, the property is on, uh, up for sale. You know, the closing takes a little long, and that way, we can just make it part of the wholesale agreement, um, that we pay off this as part of that. That would be helpful.
I think that's too long.
I agree, Commissioner.
Usually, 30 days, 45 days, that's what we...
I, I am, I am making the request, and I, and I, um, will take any suggestions that you might make.
Forty-five days, Penna Manager?
Forty-five days, I think is reasonable. Um, if, uh, the parties would need an extension because they're not able to lock in a new buyer or close if there's a new buyer, then he could come back and, and, uh, request an extension, Mr. Villalobos?
Yes.
I, I think that the fine should be the responsibility of the owner, not whether a, a buy or a sell is gonna take place.
I agree.
Forty-five days, and then they gotta pay, no matter what happens. I think that should be ju- that's, that should be the...
I would agree with you on the timeframe.
Yes, sir.
So, 45 days.
Understood.
I, I, I agree with you. I mean, we're, we're not talking about substantial amount of money, so, uh, I know that's relative, depending on who you talk to.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but, yeah.
Well, you guys owe 16,000 bucks.
I'm not complaining.
So, you're going 500, so...
He's not complaining.
All right. We have, we have a motion, we have a motion to take it.
You agree, you agree, right? Forty-five days.
Forty-five days, yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Can you call the vote, Ms. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, out of your vote. Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mojina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passed.
And forty-five days would be...
Thank you very much.
What day, an area?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days from today, from today. I have to check the calendar.
Not one day more.
And he's not complaining.
Would it be forty-five days from when it's, the, the resolution is signed? Or?
From today's date.
From today? Okay, okay.
Okay.
And no extension of, correct?
For now.
Yeah.
For now, you have forty-five days.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, uh, I will take advice from you. Uh, shall we go back to your agenda, or is there any other item that we should take out of order?
I would recommend that this, uh, at this point, we, we can follow the original order of the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that will be item five, then?
Item five, report of the city manager.
Madam Manager?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a written report, however, I would like to report that, um, as of yesterday, when Mr. Penna provided me with the information, uh, the city had, um, the city's contractor that was selected to do the sidewalk project had replaced a total of 734 slabs or nine, or equivalent to $90,000 worth of sidewalk replacements. Um, they are now moving towards the west part of the city, Mr. Penna. They're done pretty much with the east southwest, southwest part of the city. Uh, we're making huge progress and, um, obviously, I'm sorry, sir?
Addressing the what?
Yes. We have first, uh, asked the contractor to address those sidewalks that meet a liability criteria that are raised two inches or over. Um, if there's money left after we do the immediate, which are the most dangerous sidewalks, then we will come back, reassess the next group of sidewalks, and we will do this for as long as there is money available in the pot. But this, we would like to think that this is the first phase of a, an ongoing, uh, program to, for sidewalk replacements.
I, I got a lot of good feedback from, from the residents so far. So, okay, so we, we have spent, what, 90?
Ninety thousand, as of yesterday.
And, and our first pot is what?
Two fifty.
Oh, two fifty? Okay. I thought it was a hundred.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Two hundred and six, 160,000, but we added another 80,000 from PTP. So, we are at a quarter of a million dollars.
It's needed.
Okay.
So...
Right.
I think we've made a lot, a lot of progress.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, um, I had an id- an idea, and I'm not gonna tell you where I thought about the idea, 'cause I, it's crazy to think somebody would think about this in, in the shower, but it goes in line with...
Are you saying it's a shower?
Yeah, no. This is crazy. I, I think about the city a lot. But, um, Mr. Commissioner Blanes and the mayor and all of you have always promoted the city to look professional and project ourselves in a professional manner, so I thought that it was high time that we prepared a little welcome packet instead of giving people pieces of paper, which look, is time-consuming, um, it really taxes the resources of the office, and it makes us look unprofessional. So, we thought that we would take it a, a step, um, further, and we created this folder, and all of you have a, a folder in your possession that contains the revised pamphlet with all the num- numbers for all city departments, email addresses, um, the services that we provide, the garbage collection schedule, your water and sewer billing information, as well as your online payments and pay-by-phone feature, the activities and events, the senior center, um, it actually has, uh, like a little gallery of the pictures for our current commission with your current titles, a message from our mayor, and basic do's and don'ts. And we prepared these after, uh, like two years ago, and they, they're pretty popular. We give them to residents. Uh, we also, uh, contemplated, including in the packet, the bus route, and we up- updated the information, the bus route as approved by the Miami-Dade County, the half-cent penny tax. And so, it gives you a detail of all the stops that the buses make and, um, the circulator bus. It also contemplates a copy of the 2016 newsletter that was issued to the residents of the city of West Miami, which was at the request of the mayor and city commission, which gives the residents a little bit of background of our commercial corridors, how they, the revitalization projects came into play, um, what the city did when it used to flood, and, and how, um, the flooding has, is a thing of the past, and, and obviously, um, some financial information, uh, which is based at a point in time when the city wasn't doing that well. It gives you an idea because it has pictures of the before and after look, and it's in English and Spani- in Spanish, and I thought that people that were new to the city deserve the right to know what challenges we've had in the past and how we have overcome those and where we are today. In addition to that, and because of the upcoming hurricane season, there's a flyer on hurricane-ready, preparedness, that Mr. Quintana, uh, prepared for us using the website information from NOAA, which is the National Oceanic and Atmospheric, uh...
Administration.
I'm sorry? Association?
Administration.
Administration, I'm sorry. That, that's a big name. Our passport service information, the tree trimming, uh, booklets provided by Florida Power and Light. We have, uh, a flyer on how to dispose of your garbage so that people understand that if you throw liquids in your garbage, it's going to create a welfare, public welfare issue in the city. Uh, notice to city residents, if you don't pay your bill on time, and we're gonna disconnect your water, it's gonna cost you $20 to get it reconnected. Um, and obviously, how to care for their pets and be good neighbors. Um, it also has the summer camp pamphlet, uh, which is in detail with all the summer camp activities, the cost of the program. So, I think what we did is compile everything that we have and presented it to the residents, or we'd like to present it to the residents in this fashion, but we wanted to give it to you first before we actually put it out there for the public. It has the mayor's business card, it has mine, but we can change that as well. I know the chief also supplied us with some magnets, some police cars, so that people can put it in their refrigerators with the telephone number for the police department. That's missing from your packet.
And, and they will get this when they open up a water account?
When they come in here and bring their paperwork, they moved into the city. Welcome to the city of West Miami. We'd like to give you a packet that will help you become acquainted with the city and the services that we offer.
Great. Okay. Very nice, very, very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar.
And by the way, that the, I, I, I asked Quintana to help us create a, um, a timeless cover so that we can continue to use these folders, and I think he selected one of the best pictures, um, you know, that, that will probably be a good one for many years to come. No names are on the outside, so we can use these, also these folders, for new employment packet information, and we could actually use them for your presentations if you have special presentations and you don't want to use plaques. This is a, a nice presentation folder that you can issue certificates with. So, um, Quintana did a great job, as usual. We praise his work all the time, so that's one more under his, his cap, so that's pretty much it. I hope you like it. I, I hope you find it professional, and I hope to get good, good feedback from the residents on that.
Everybody like it.
Very nice.
Everybody loves reading.
Everybody like it.
Great job.
So far? Thank you, Mr. Q. Great job.
Mr. Q, you did a good job.
And last but not least, I would like to, uh, ask Mr. Penna to come to the podium and talk about our street signs. I know we've been a little slow and lagging on that, and I know Commissioner Blanes is always reminding us of the importance that this project has, and if you could give us a quick report of the challenges, the delays that we've had, and where we're at with the pro- where we're at with the project.
Well, the challenge is, like we said last year, that we only have two, two molds to make these, uh, forms, and we're using the same personnel that we use for painting, for creating new offices, for repairing items at the wreck side of the break. So, it's on a availability. We started with the corridor on 57th Avenue, changing the ones that already have the, the blue plaques on them, and as soon as we finish there, we'll jump over to 62nd Avenue.
Okay. We're happy with the sidewalks.
I'm sorry?
We're happy with the sidewalks.
There you go.
So, we can weigh a little, yeah.
Well, Mr. Penna, is there any way that we can hire temporary work to, to, to do just that? Uh, hire, you know, a couple of, of people and, and assign them strictly to do that task?
Mr. Blanes, I've had two vacant positions since last year, and nobody wants to work here for the kinda money we're paying.
That's correct.
We need to address that in the budget.
No one looks at the benefits, Commissioner Blanes. It's unfortunate.
Where are we, where are we, uh, advertising for these jobs?
Miami Herald, online, paper.
Our website.
Website, word-of-mouth, friends and neighbors, note-takers.
We definitely do, we definitely do need to address that at budget time.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Definitely.
And we've come a long way, but evidently, not long enough, so...
All right. Anything else, Madam Manager?
Uh, yes, as of this afternoon, one more thing. I just spoke to John Michael Lopez shortly before 6:00 PM. He advises that up to this afternoon, we have about 165, um, campers already registered at the end of today. We expect that with school being out tomorrow, that Thursday and Friday's registration and Monday morning's registration will probably be at 2:25, which has been consistent with prior year's activity. We have a staff onboard, and obviously their schedules will depend on the number of children attending on a weekly basis. We have partnered with Miami-Dade County Public School Systems. They're sending two interns with that program where we can save about $3,000 over the 10-week period of time. And we have partnered up with Miami-Dade County Community Action Agency for the free lunch program. And the reason we qualify for that is because Silvania Heights Elementary School has 51% of the children who are below the certain threshold where they are considered a low-income
Over to the...
Poverty level. So we get a free lunch program as a result of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, what's our cap on summer camp?
We like to cap it at 250. Reason being, the more kids you have, the more counselors you have to pay, the more they're taxing your facility. And to be quite frank with you, mayor, the safety and the well-being of the children should be the most paramount. It's at a certain number. We want to make sure we have adequate supervision and that we can manage the program. So we're going to cap it at 250.
Okay.
And we have about 225 usually?
We have usually 225.
We get very close, very good.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, next item.
Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney. Thank you.
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
No report today?
I do, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Committee reports. First, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you. I know your fingers were not thanking me, and I'm sure you were saying a few things under your breath that you probably would not like to repeat now. I asked, for, sorry if anyone else knows what I'm talking about, we presented Silvania Heights with the certificates of achievement. We, I brought that up way before, and I asked that the mayor and I sign the certificates instead of stamping us...
How many certificates did I sign?
About 80. So I'd like to thank you, Mr. ... I believe, you know, we showed an effort and it made those certificates more personal.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
I'll take you up to the challenge.
I'm going, you know, I'm going to expect that going forward every year, I'm going to ask that we sign our certificates.
So I have a year to rest?
Yes, yes, yes. And by the way, the mayor gave me like five minutes to sign mine. He took forever, and he gave me like five minutes. I had to sign them the day of, no, just kidding. So the Silvania Heights was very appreciative. Principal Reyes spoke very highly of the city and thanked us and the children. I mean, because I was up there literally handing each one to the child as they got their graduation certificate from the school. So they were very appreciative. It went very nice. Madam clerk, thank you for your help with that. Thank you very much. So that's the certificate of achievements. Now I'd like to report on DARE graduation. If you wondered why I was underdressed today, I'm supporting and promoting our DARE program. Today, we had Silvania Hot, no, I'm sorry, Somerset DARE graduation. It was the first, it was the inaugural DARE graduation because this is the first year they've had fifth grade. So since DARE is just for fifth grades, this was their first. The chief was there, spoke very well. Sergeant Del Os stood an outstanding job as usual. The children loved the program. Just hearing her talk to the kids, I mean, she makes such a, I'm sure, lasting impression on each and every one of them. The school was very grateful that we brought the program to them. So like I said, today was Somerset, tomorrow is Silvania. So I want to thank you all for your support of the program, thank the police department, and commend Sergeant Del Os for the fine job that she does with the program. And Madam manager, we'll discuss when budget time comes, the funding, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so thank you all for your support.
We'll be meeting with each and every one of the commission members for your, make sure your projects are included there.
I feel it's an invaluable program that we bring to the children. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to report something.
Yes.
Number one, you see this, the, our bus that... I already did. Our little bus that goes around the city to move our residents. It's an itinerary here for the residents and the places they stop. Well, let me tell you what happened now. In July, it's going to begin the Flagami Trolley. Flagami Trolley is going to move from, I think, 37th Avenue, going down to Bay Road, connected with the Miami Trolley and Corregaz Trolley, and then planning to come here to 67, 62nd to hit this front of City Hall. So our residents that use this, our little bus, they may connect it with the Flagami Trolley and get the trolley here and go all the way to downtown in Brickell because they connect it with the Corregaz Trolley or Miami Trolley. And they move without payment because the trolleys are free, connecting Flagami Trolley and then get Miami Trolley, Corregaz Trolley, and then we have the facility to go even to the Bay Side, whatever they want, through the trolley. They, it's going to be the 16th of July that the Flagami Trolley, they name it that way. It's really the city of Miami, but they call Flagami because it's this district. So our residents, and you are invited too, to get the trolley here and go all the way down downtown in the trolley systems. It's going to be in July, it starts in July that day.
Excellent.
Second thing is that you know for 10 years or more, us being trying to get, fighting with the people in Tallahassee, trying to get money from, put the new lines on the ground for the potable water in the city. Well, we never have help from the state, the federal government, nobody helped us. We already have the plans. We already have, our engineers have the plans how to do it and where to do it. But was not physically possible because there was no money for that. Well, I was being for years trying to get contacts with something, somebody, companies that financed this. There is an international company that have business with Miami-Dade County, two, one or two cities in their county, they making jobs, about sewers, systems, and other things. And they have about $250 million project with the DOT. And these people also do municipal works and they finance. There is the system that we are planning financing. And then I tried to arrange from these people to come here and make a presentation to us. I already told them that our engineers, calculation they did is about 16.5 millions changed the, our lines, underground lines, because we have been losing water on the ground and we paid into the county and we never recovered that money. So we have been fighting for that. So I tried to arrange the presentation of these people to come here and let us know. First, I have to arrange that they get together with our engineers and make a presentation here together, and how they may be able to do it, finance to 30-year program, because those programs are in long-term. So this is something I have been for years trying to get some solution to this, and I will try to make a presentation, they come here and I make a presentation on how that is possible. So it's something that is in the beginning, but at least, at last, we have something. They will come here and make a presentation, and the engineers, our engineers, talk to them, and we will see what kind of possibility of that.
Thank you.
All right.
Good idea. Anything else on the reports? Okay, next item.
Item nine. Item nine, cities and presentations, no presentations. Item 10, under finished business. Item 10B, report by the office of the city manager regarding award of TPO grant for traffic study by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission. I'm happy to report that the Miami-Dade County Traffic Planning Organization has recommended the city of West Miami for a, an award of, an amount of $240,000 for the traffic study, the city's traffic study, which you have asked for us to pursue. Our match is 20% of whatever money they allot to the city. There are some specific instructions that Mr. Ruano, our grant writer, is already working on. We have a meeting on Tuesday, July 18th, if my memory doesn't fail me, with our city engineers. Mr. Ruano, mayor, you've been invited to that meeting as well, and we have to send you a calendar. You requested to be part of at least the organizational meeting because obviously we have to put together an RFP and a bid packet before we go out and award the traffic study. So we want to make sure that we contemplate all the areas that this commission, that the city administration and the police department has dealt with in terms of traffic and traffic issues and your constituent concerns, so that we can study the entire model and put it out there in a bid packet. However, we cannot do anything until we have an executed contract with the county. As you know, this takes time, and unfortunately, we cannot commence the work until we have a, pretty much, an executed agreement and a notice to proceed, so to speak, from the county. So I suspect with the way, the bureaucracy, because it is what it is, of the actual agreements and the resolutions that have to be in place, and the process, if you want to call it that, that with any good timing, we're looking at a commencement time of maybe October or November 1st of this year. The study itself, we anticipated to take about three or four months, Mr. Penna. I'm sure that we're also going to meet with the chief or his staff that week so that we can ask him to start putting together some statistical data on automobile accidents and just identify some of the areas so that we can be ready to go once the county says you are ready to proceed with the project. But I don't want there to be a sense of, I don't want to lead you all to believe that because we have been approved for this grant or recommended for approval that it's time for us to move forward. We cannot move forward until there is an entire packet put together, execution of documents, and approval by the county. So this is good news, but it's work in progress.
Madam manager, I got a couple of questions on that, okay? Do we anticipate the amount of money that it's going to take to do this traffic study?
In speaking to our city engineers, and Juan, please correct me if I'm wrong, in speaking preliminarily to our city engineer, it all depends on everything we want them to study, all the items that we want them to study. We want to see the impact of our traffic commerce. We want to see the impact of the ways application. We want to see accidents. So they're studying different areas. We want to see the impact of development. We want to see residential traffic. We want to see how many people are cutting through our streets to get to other places. All that has to be contemplated, and I would recommend that if we're going to do a traffic study, let's do it right and let's include everything. So initially, we talked about maybe $60,000, and that's based off of what we paid for the last traffic study, and I think Penna was $40,000. So, you know, times have changed, everything is more expensive, and we anticipate that anywhere from 60 to 70,000 dollars.
Okay, and then, okay, I kind of did the math. So we could potentially secure 40,000, and you said that we're going to put a match of 8, 20%, which is $8,000, so that's $48,000.
If, if, right, right, 48. That's if we can find a, an engineering, a traffic engineering firm that would do it for that money. Once we go out to bid, we don't know what those numbers are going to be.
Okay, well, so, but if you said the amount will be probably 60 to 70, where's that money? Where can that money come from?
From the half-cent penny tax.
From the...
PTP as a match.
Okay.
I have a question, mayor.
Yes.
But we do have already approved that, it's already approved that grant, right?
That we are recommended for approval.
All right, we have been recommended.
Recommended for approval.
Yeah, so we have been recommended.
For a grant which includes an award to the city of West Miami up to $40,000. So we don't know what the magic number is going to be at the end of the day.
Okay.
So we have been asked to submit a detailed, a scope of the services, a project schedule, the budget, our local match requirement, so we will be working with the county.
Is normally, no, say no, normally it's not a 20% match?
Yes, we have a 20% match requirement.
That's a Mary match for that, right?
That pretty much is built into all these types of grants, yes.
Okay, I have some other questions too.
Yes, sir.
All right, when you talk about a package that we have to present to the county, in that package, do we have already to have a selected engineer firm? No?
No, our city engineer will probably do the scope of the service work, give some recommendations on how we're going to package the detailed scope of services. And it's not going to come for free, they're going to charge us for this.
And then it's going to go out to bid?
Not yet, until we actually...
No, 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 I understand. I'm trying to understand the process.
Yes, then it goes out to bid.
You know, I'm so used to working with deadlines, so I always look at, okay, October 2018, okay? So if we work it backwards from that, and I know we still don't have a commitment, we have a recommendation, I'm just trying to establish all the steps so we don't miss the...
The boat.
Yeah, exactly.
No, we're not going to miss a beat, Mr. Mayor, I guarantee you that. I'm sure that Juan is going to run with the ball after July 30th, and we will have a project carved out for the county's approval because the county has to look at it and approve it. What that, how long it will take once it gets to them, I don't know, because we're, they're dealing with a lot of other applicants from other municipalities that have grant money, that have other projects and the works being funded by their program. So, you know, let's assume for a second that we can get their comments back within 60 days after we have a contract, 45 days, 60 days. If there are comments that need to be reviewed for the city, that's going to obviously require our end to be ready to address those. And so I don't see an award here anytime before October, mid-October.
Okay. So like you said, we don't have to have a selected bidder, so we get sort of similar to what is called a dry run from the county?
Yes.
And then the permit will be pulled, well, there's no permit, right? Okay.
No.
All right.
No, it's just a study.
A study, okay.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. When was our last traffic study? How long ago?
Too long.
So is that about the average time to have traffic studies done? Is like, is there like a, every so often you should do a traffic study, or is it based on demand? How does that work?
Yeah, basically, we should do it at least once every 10 years to know what you're doing. Our delay was because we can't build all the circles at once. Once we build all the circles, then we have the ability to see what the effects are.
So with this one, obviously, we're going to do the most comprehensive we can
Yes.
For the money that we're allotted. And obviously, I'm probably saying something you already know, we probably need to think, if we can, 10 years down the road, what might we need to know for the next 10 years?
They will provide that in their conclusions.
Perfect. No, I'm saying when we, the things we request, you know, make it as comprehensive as we can, but thinking 10 years down the road, what, you know, we would like to know.
Again, as part of the scope, we'll include the percentage of development that we have now, what we allow, so that they understand where we're going.
Exactly, perfect, thank you. That's exactly what I meant. Thank you for putting it into a more understandable. You read my thoughts.
Yeah, cars will be driving by themselves by then.
Exactly. We might want to, you know, driverless cars for sure needs to be in there.
They already are.
No, I know, but that's part of the traffic study.
And again, Mr. Mayor, with any good timing, we're talking about going out to bid October, an award possibly early November.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11C, a discussion in reference to 4th of July event and request for reconsideration of event preparations by Commissioner Suarez.
Commissioner Suarez.
Well, this is not a discussion. This is what we may call a friendly conversation. I just want to make a friendly conversation with you in the table and the viewers about the 4th of July is coming, and our neighbors knows, understand that our community center, you know, is for the neighborhood, it's not just for the city. In the same way, we have the recreation that is not only for the residents, it's, you know, for the neighbors, and summer camps, they pay for that. And then when it comes to Patriotic Festivity like the 4th of July, you know, all our neighbors, our residents and neighbors around, they enjoy, you know, the fireworks, you know, and the hamburgers and the hot dogs and the watermelons. So I think it's a great thing that the commission and administration, you know, they are going to do the same way that has been done for years, so our residents and neighbors enjoy the 4th of July festivity. And I just want to make a, recognizing the commission and administration, you know, for...
And I just want to make a recognition, the commission and administration, you know, for a great festivity. We already approved the money for the fireworks. So that's my friendly conversation. Just congratulate everybody of you, anyone, any of each of you and the manager and the lawyer and everybody for the festivity that we are going to celebrate. That's my comment.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Suarez.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I should add anything else, but, you know, this is something that I actually, in hindsight, I thought about it after we had made a decision to replace the food with food trucks.
That was changed already.
I know. I know it's been changed, but this is just some reflections that I had and, you know, I want you all to know how I think about that. You know, we don't have a secretary, we don't have a chief of staff, we don't have a, I don't have a desk, I don't have an office. So basically lots of times, you know, we sit here and we are not as prepared to make certain decisions. In other cities, they have a chief of staff, they have the chief of staff as an assistant, and constantly they're updating the elected official with all the implications of all the possible decisions that they can make while they sit here. We don't have that. I think we're still good. We do a really good job. We're a small city, but so...
Welcome to Mayberry.
And that's part of our allure, that's part of our, that's why this is a great place to live. And by the same token, it causes a lot of issues for us because of our recurring revenue. It's not as much as other cities because of our size. But anyways, so the contention was that we were going to replace the free hot dogs and hamburgers that we have been offering our residents and our visitors for many, many years. We're going to replace that with food trucks, which was a good idea too. And there was some contention about one thing or the other. And then, you know, I know there was some contention over there, and then all of a sudden the attention turned to me and I was asked, "Well, Commissioner Blanis, what do you think?" And I was put on the spot. And you know what? I wasn't quite ready to make that decision, but I did. I made a decision for the sake of making a decision. And, you know, afterwards I started thinking about it and, you know, and I said, "You know what? I don't think that's right." And I will tell you why I don't think that's right. As Commissioner, as our city manager stated, that 51% of the children that attend Silvania High School are in the poverty level. And a lot of the residents that attend our Fourth of July program are actually people that live in the vicinity. They don't necessarily live in the city. And a lot of these families are, these families that have these kids at Silvania Elementary School, and consequently, they work one and two and three jobs just so they can live in this area, so they can have their kids go to Silvania High School because it's such a good elementary school. So there are some families that might be able to afford $30, $40, $50 on a weekday to buy food for their children, but there are some that can't. And, you know, I think that a lot of the people that come to our Fourth of July program fit that category. So we were going to, you know, to suspend the free hot dogs and hamburgers and we were going to have the food trucks, you know, sell food to the participants. So, you know, that was going to cause an issue. That was going to cause a dichotomy, you know, of the have and the have-nots. And we made the decision and consequently, better heads prevailed and we, you know, the administration and the mayor, you know, looked into it and then it changed. But anyways, what I'm alluding to is that we need to think, you know, of all the possible implications that our decisions can have. And that was one decision that we made that we had not covered all the implications. So, and it was just something very simple, you know, free hot dogs and hamburgers like we've always done for the last 20, 30 years versus the food trucks. And we opted to go with the food trucks. But I think we failed. We failed to realize...
No, 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 we haven't.
No, we haven't because we did away with the food trucks and we're bringing back the hot dogs and the hamburgers. But anyways, you know, I'm making a big deal out of this. It's really not, but it's just, you know, a reflection that I had and thoughts that I had about it, you know. You know, we're lucky, you know, a lot of us sitting here, we're lucky, you know, that we're able to afford, you know, you know, buying food from food trucks, but, you know, there are some families that are not able to. And, you know, I hate to think that we could possibly, even if it's just one family, I would, you know, I would really feel, you know, horrible, so.
Well, thank you.
Those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Blanis and Commissioner Suarez for bringing that to the table and one happy family, so let's continue to the next item.
Yes, you know, Mayor, one thing, one thing is that we have a great festivity for July. And we have one of the best fire stations in the county, this Rescue Forty. We're lucky that we have, you know, the equipment necessary here for everything. So we've put together everything and we are doing very well.
Standby for the fireworks.
Yes.
All right, next item.
Item 11D, discussion and recommendation in reference to proposed changes of building department fee schedule by city manager and director of planning and zoning.
Mr. Penna. For Ms. Aguilar, I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief and I'll yield to Mr. Penna for details. We're looking at ways to address the audit comment and something that we know is going to probably happen once the development opportunities are not here, so we're preparing for the future in trying to create additional revenues for the building department. And I'll let Juan advise you as to what we have done at our level to try to bring a proposal in the near future to you.
Mr. Penna.
Mr. Mayor, basically when we inherited the building department from Miami-Dade County, we also adopted their fee schedule. However, in the past three-year history, we realized that their fee schedule is based on a bigger pie than we possibly have. And now that we have a couple of years of experience where we're averaging close to 300 permits a year, we need to make that fee schedule work with those 300 permits and the cost of running the department. So we went ahead and we compared our fees to other cities like Coral Gables, South Miami, City of Miami, and other smaller municipalities, see where our prices are compared to theirs. And in some areas, we are very deficient; in others, we are high. So we're restructuring the fee schedule to come back and make it more amicable for us and at the same time, cover our expense to the building department, make it whole, so in the future, going down the line, like the auditors say, we don't run into a deficit in the department.
Okay. The only thing I want you to keep in mind is remember how the building department started. The building department started for convenience to the people that live here in the city of West Miami. And, but obviously, we have to, I know Ms. Aguilar defers my opinion, because I always say at least we have to break even, and she says, "No, we have to make some money so we can put it to reserve." But nevertheless, you know, keep that in mind when we...
No, that's a department that has to break even.
Yeah.
And also, just like water and just like sanitation, those three have to break even. We don't have to make money on them, but we have to break even.
We provide a great service, people are very happy, they can come over here now, pull a permit fairly quickly and without the frustration of going to Dade County and, I'm not going to go into the details.
Correct.
You said it very nicely, that we, it was not a hostile takeover of the building department from, nevermind.
Inherited.
We inherited the building department, right, okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
You have to finish.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penna, you're the director of planning and building. Let's see, percentage. Suppose I want to change a window. How much cost a permit for change windows?
Right now...
I want to change the picture window in front of my house.
Right now, $130.
$130. And in percentage, how much is what you propose or you're thinking in this increase? 10%, 20%, 15%?
It's probably about 15% to $150.
Is what you have idea, your department have idea?
Yes.
Increase it 15%?
Yes.
Because as the mayor said, the main idea here is not for a big building because not too many lots available.
Correct.
This is going to be finished. Then the neighbors, is what are you going to do, the permits, change the windows and the door, do the regular things in the old houses like we have here?
Correct.
For the forties and the fifties and some of the sixties. So your idea is increase it 15% for the permits?
On some, sure as a window.
That's what you are thinking?
Yes. It depends on what category we're in.
But also, as he mentioned, there's some of the permits are high that we're going to bring them down, so.
So some are going to be down and some are going to be high?
Exactly.
Depends the category that is...
Correct. And the time that it takes to review and the time that it takes to inspect when you're out there.
Can you, well, can you bring for next time in relation of those things?
Yeah, we're going to present you.
10% A and 15 B and 18 C and which is the differences?
Sure.
Why and why is the difference?
Yes.
Because you're talking about the time taken to the engineers or taken to the...
For the engineers to review and then for the engineers to send an inspector out to...
And all this, that. I think it's good if you bring that because we and the public, we understand, we know why and how.
Correct.
Yeah, well, you bring this study, then we will know how to do.
Yeah, this is, this is coming as a recommendation and proposed changes, it's not a resolution or anything at this time.
That's correct.
No, that would be an ordinance.
Yeah, eventually.
Right, and then you'll get to look at all the fee schedules existing.
But before you bring an ordinance, you should give us...
We will, in the next meeting.
Something to study and do.
Yeah, okay.
You'll get it in the next meeting.
Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
Item 11E, report by the office of the city manager in reference to Miami-Dade County Office of the Property Appraiser, 2018 assessed values. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners. On June 1st, 2018, the Miami-Dade County Office of Property Appraiser delivered a preliminary 2018 assessment roll estimates for the city of West Miami. You were provided a copy of that along with a memo issued by our office on the estimates. Our citywide estimates this year, as prepared by the property appraiser's office, is a total of $546 million of assessed values citywide. That includes everything, residential apartments, commercial developments, it also includes demolitions, it also includes the sales of single-family homes and multifamily homes. So it's a combination of everything that encompasses the folios in the city of West Miami. That being sent, that being said, we calculated the growth over last year's growth. Our growth this year is approximately 15.6% over the 2017, 2018 revenues for real estate and personal property values. This is still great news, although we did not grow as far as percentage-wise, we didn't meet the threshold where we were at last year. And that is because there's been an adjustment in the market. Mr. Garcia spoke recently at the managers' association meeting, and there was an adjustment. Apparently, properties have leveled out, some have been reduced in prices because they've been on the market too long. Demolition values, area sales, not only within West Miami but outside our city limits affect us. So let's say if our neighbors to the west, their property values have decreased, well, it affects our values as well, our assessed rolls. And so our values are predicated not only on our small municipalities, they're predicated based on this surrounding area. So I know there's been development, I know there's been sales, I know there has been demolitions in other places, and all that is put into this number. That said, this approximate, and I'm calling it an approximate because it is not until July 1st, 2018, that the property appraiser's office will deliver the final DR420 form, which is the formula that will give us the exact amount of assessed values and the formula for computing the millage, what the worth of each millage is. So this at least is going to give us enough so we can start preparing the budget, which we've already tasked the department directors to do so. And we're going to have meetings with members of staff starting the week of June 18th, as soon as Mercedes comes back. And then, once we have their input, we will be scheduling meetings with you all to make sure that your projects, as approved by the city commission, are contemplated in next year's budget. So using the numbers from the property appraiser's office, we need to keep in mind that there is a constitutional amendment on the ballot in November, and I assure you that it probably will pass, offering an additional $25,000 of homestead exemption benefit, which will play a role, not precisely in next year's budget, but moving forward and on a recurring basis. So even if we have leeway next year and we have more revenue, we need to think about future years, about building reserves, about making sure that whatever project we get into, whatever operational costs we have, they are sustainable in coming years. We also need to be mindful that one hurricane can take your reserves. And I don't know whether you recall, that was my last message with the reserves, and then came the hurricane, and exactly and precisely, we have that money tied up in FEMA reimbursements. And we have not seen the first dollar come back to us yet. So this being said, just so you know, there's going to be a lot of thought put into next year's budget so that we can stay as frugal as possible, making sure we can deliver services, but we need to address certain things. Mr. Penna just talked to you about manpower. We can't find people to come work for $10 an hour, especially in public works. There's a hard job because you have to find somebody to multitask. There are services that the city provides that we are not adequately funding in terms of manpower. So we need to keep all these things in mind. And I bring this early on so that you can deliberate and make your notes. This afternoon, we issued to you a memorandum. I don't know whether Carrie, my secretary, your secretary, was able to deliver those this afternoon, but I signed off on a memorandum giving you the impact fee structures for the general services, police department, sewer fund, and parks. We have impact fees coming in from development that have, we've contemplated as revenues, we've expensed capital improvement projects to those impact fees, and we have also highlighted, for your ready reference, those projects that we have leveraged dollars that are future projects in the works that are going to be completed sometime next year. So these impact fees are going to play a role in next year's budget because you're going to see them coming in as transfers into your general fund and transfers out to your parks department, to your police department for those related expenses. So you may wind up with a $7.5 million budget, but in fact, you have maybe $800,000 coming in from impact fees, and it gives you a kind of a false sense of, you know, the real value, the real worth of your budget. So we need to take all these projects into account. I've been issuing memos to you lately regarding all these in preparation of the budget. Look at the one for impact fees, please feel free to ask. We always meet with you, we always help you prepare for meetings or prepare you for projects and questions that may come up. So I'm ready and I'm available, and you know that I make myself available during, before, or after hours. So please take a look at that as that will be very important and critical to your budget process.
Thank you. Next item, item F.
Item 11F, report by the office of the city manager in reference to hazard mitigation grant problem.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, again, I'm going to yield to Mr. Penna. I got to tell you that Mr. Penna and our city engineers have been working diligently with a local mitigation strategy group. It is a group that is comprised of members from Miami-Dade County and other municipalities. And every time there's a hurricane, there's a new pot of money that becomes available for capital improvement projects. And I'd like for him to go over the list of projects that we have put in and have been recommended for funding. Mr. Penna, please.
Basically, the HMGP money comes from the total damage that Hurricane Irma caused, then a certain percentage of that gets given back to the state of Florida by FEMA for hardening and resiliency to structures that are in government or other agencies that provide services to hurricane victims. We have our, projects that we've included have been the hardening of City Hall, which is the replacement of the windows here to Hurricane Impact and front doors and stuff like that, which is at $50,000. We've been approved for, recommended for funding on that. We also included the police addition for the $500,000 that, to do the second floor, that's been approved also for funding. And the other one that we have is another $500,000, $700,000 in storm drainage, additional storm drainage to the area east of 62nd Avenue, localized storm drains for those areas. You're ranked on a list of everybody's wish list, so once we get a final number, they go down the list, and if you're ready to go with your plans are ready, then they go ahead and fund you. If you don't have plans or you're not ready to go, they skip you and then go to the next recipient. We're pretty down far on the list, we're in the 80s, but at this time, I have already spoke to the manager, I believe that if one project that we need to make sure that we have plans in the works for, and that would be the addition to the police station, so that if funding becomes available, we're ready to go.
Mr. Penna, there's one area that I noticed that there's a lot of accumulation of water. It's right on the corner, it was 12th Street.
57th Avenue.
57th Avenue.
We fought with the state when they were rebuilding 57th Avenue.
That didn't happen before, and so...
But they didn't do anything to that corner. That is a simple catch basin that's there, it goes nowhere, so any amount of flooding takes over. Eventually does go away, but only after a couple of days when the water recedes. We do want to obviously replace that area there, and that would be one of the localized French drains that we have planned for those areas.
Okay, but is that part of this plan or is that in the future?
Yes, that's part of the funding for the $750,000.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Next item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11G. This is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager the expenditure of $10,820 for the purpose of accomplishing the cleaning and painting with bituminous paint, the piping walls, and retile the floor of lift station number four, providing for effective date. Mayor and city commission.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, I'd like to yield to Mr. Penna so he could give you a briefing on the work to be done at the stations, and then we're going to recommend that you authorize it with use of impact fee money. Again, these are the things that you need to look at in the memo that we're giving you.
As a part of the work that we did to lift station number four, which is the one by the rec center, we replaced all the piping, we replaced the pumps, there's more work to be done to it, and inspecting the station once the pipes, the old pipes were out. Everything needs to be retilled, repainted, the tiles are coming loose off the floor. It needs to have pressure cleaned and painted on the inside, and also the, all the new piping needs to be coated with bituminous paint so that the moisture and chemicals, odors and methane gases in there doesn't affect the piping on the exterior. So this is the additional work that we would be contemplating to allow the present contractor to continue the work there.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penna, this bituminous paint, this is a thick, special paint, this water resistance and rust resistant paint, right?
Rust, rust chemical and water.
And fire.
Yeah.
And fire.
This is very special.
Yes.
Very special paint.
And expensive.
Yep.
Very expensive, yeah. Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanis, I give the vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Muñoz.
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Go to the order. Anything for the go to the order?
I do, Mr. Mayor, one quick thing, and we, I believe we talked about this the last meeting or when Fausto was here, our legislative consultant, about the shared vacation, shared rental platform. I've had another neighbor come up to me. Mr. Penn, I'm not sure if we discussed it in that meeting, maybe a conversation we had one-on-one, that you said there was, that you were aware of, there was two. I'm hearing there's more. So my question is, is there any way we can really find out how many we have? Is there any way, or Madam Manager, is there any way we can really know how many?
We could go on Airbnb or every other platform and look for this area, that's about the only way.
That's the only way?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did find out recently that one that's causing, or caused the most annoyance on 16th Street, that they are renting it with each room individually. In other words, duplex, not just a single home.
How wonderful.
They'll rent you a one-bedroom with a shared bath and the other bedroom with another shared bath.
Okay, with that said, ladies and gentlemen, we have a huge problem brewing here, and every day that passes, I'm sensing it's getting worse and worse. Again, you know, the amount might seem small to others, but we're so small that just a couple is going to be a big problem for this. And it's my understanding there's more than a couple. So I know we gave the approval to start working on this, so, Madam Manager, I'd like to, right away, have a meeting with co-compliance, Mr. Penna, perhaps legal, yourself, and we need to start looking at, I know we can't outright ban it, as our legislative consultant informed us, but we need to start looking at how we're going to regulate and how we're going to attempt to get this somewhat out of control so it doesn't affect our quality of life and the neighbors that are living behind, in front of, and on the side of these. Because what's happening is our residential area is becoming commercialized. You have these companies buying property for the sole purpose of vacation, shared rental. So they're bringing a business into our residential area. We need to get on top of that, in my estimation, very, very quickly.
We need to license them.
Well, again, this is what we have to meet with, because I don't know what we can and can't do.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on.
No, I'm just saying.
This is a go to the order.
Right.
We're going too far here.
No, just know that we, I'm going to continue meeting with, because you did give me the buy-in last time to look into this.
Oh, absolutely.
So I just want to now bring you, what I feel is a great urgency that we get on top of this right away.
We got it.
And that's it, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.